Good evening. I'd like to call our school committee meeting to order. It is Thursday, October 17th. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WCTV. Audio recorded by Jamie Wixton. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't see any members of the general public. Does anyone wish to address the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to good news. Anyone like to share some good news in the district? Brennan?
I am probably tooting my own horn here, but my son, Jacob Lincoln, was student of the month for, I believe, the month of October, and we could not be more proud of him. As I've said before, my son has special needs and school has been a struggle for him, but with the help of all of the teachers, all of the paraprofessionals and the special ed department, this is his senior year. He is looking forward to college. He is getting involved in all of the college programs and things that the school has offered. And I'd like to thank everybody involved on the educational side and in the Wareham school committee, the school system, from kindergarten straight on. You took my son, who I did not think would be able to achieve the heights he's getting to, and he is more excited than ever. And I think it's just an example of the quality education that you can get at Wareham High School. And I couldn't be happier. And I just want to give a shout out to my son and say thank you.
Thank you.
I think it says in Robert's rules, if it's all about your children, it's all fair game.
It's good to go. Okay. Yeah, he's, this year, he is up in, he's up at 5:00 AM every morning, ready for school. You know, by the time I wake up to, you know, make sure he's awake and ready to go, he's already dressed and couldn't be more excited to get out the door. And I think it's, it's just a remarkable change, and I'm so happy for it.
Anyone else want to try to follow that? Nope. Joyce?
So the unified basketball team had another game yesterday, another home game. And honestly, I don't even know if they won or they lost because I wasn't paying attention. It was just such a great game to watch on both sides. It was two really good teams, but they did such a good job. And the stands were full of staff and teachers and other students and athletes cheering them on. There was one cheerleader there doing cheers. It was great. It was great.
Great.
And they got great coverage at Wareham Week.
Yes, yes.
I think they have another game, a home game, on November 5th, I believe.
Sure, maybe is that a Wednesday?
I think, yeah, I think so. So, great.
Highly recommend it.
Didn't we have a volleyball player get a thousand?
Yes.
Yes, Olivia Lakava.
Yep.
Junior, Olivia Lakava, a thousand assists.
Assists.
First time in Wareham history anyone has gotten close to that number.
As a junior, too.
She's only a junior.
All right. Great. Thank you. We'll move on to the minutes of the meeting from September 5th. Does anyone have any changes or edits?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstained? Four, five, zero, zero. All right. So, student rep report. Emma McWilliams, our student rep, is also on the volleyball team, which also often plays or practices on Thursday evenings. So she reached out to us. She gave us some notes about what's going on in the school that's in the superintendent's report. So I would encourage all members to take a look at that. And Emma's very much looking forward to being here in person. When she can't, she will send us notes ahead of time. But I think she'll be a very good student rep, and she's sorry that she hasn't been here so far for her other commitment to the high school.
I said to the chair, I think it was an outstanding report, and kudos to her for putting it together.
Agreed. All right. Zipping right through, 35 minutes ahead of schedule here. Special education update.
Just trying to keep up with my policy reading schedule.
Good evening. Is it on? Yeah?
Yep.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
Nice to see everyone. So I'm giving a little bit of a fall update, update on some numbers and also our tiered focus monitoring, which is the former recording program review. The results came in. I know you always seek a copy of it, and there's also a copy headed inside the package.
Please turn on the microphone.
Is it on? Is it, I think it's on. Is it on? No? No, it's on.
Yeah.
Can you hear me? So just to give you an idea of the current numbers right now, this number does not include our out-of-district students, but we are currently at 483 students on active IEPs. I would like to just give a little note to this that we are in the process of switching over to the new IEP system. In that process, some of the numbers are a little skewed in our system. So this may be a little bit higher than what you're seeing here. We're kind of working through the kinks right now. So our, yes.
I'm sorry. I'm totally ignorant. What is the new IEP system?
So, two years ago, the state came out with a new IEP that is supposed to be, I actually sat on the committee performing it. It's supposed to be more user-friendly for parents and more student and parent-focused. And they rolled it out two years ago. Everybody had two years to get it up and running in their district. We chose to wait until the second year to roll it out. We have to have it all rolled out by November 1st of this year. And so it's a completely different format of the IEP. Same content, just looks different, and a lot more parent input and parent vision and student vision and student input to the IEP. So we had to basically revamp the entire system in order to be, and train all of our staff on the new system.
But if you had 100 kids on the old system, would you still have the same 100 kids on the new system?
Well, everything migrated over, so they're still in the process of kind of...
But it didn't actually change who was eligible for an IEP?
No.
Okay. Just formatting and a lot of work for you.
Yes. Yes, for all of us, actually, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So currently, we're looking at, I divided it up for you guys between inclusion and sub-separate, our sub-separate programs. Pre-K to 4, we're looking at 148 in inclusion and 52 sub-separate students for a total of 199 at the elementary school. Grades 5 through 7, we have 73 inclusion and 36 sub-separate for a total of 109. And at the high school, we have 120 in inclusion, 54 in sub-separate for a total of 174. So right now, we're looking at about 483 students, and that's just within our school system.
Hate to be picky, but if you add 148 and 52, you get 200, not 199.
You're right. That's probably my error when I was typing it out. I apologize. I will fix that for you.
Okay.
And do we know, just generally, what percentage of our overall population does that equal then?
Yes, I'm actually, it's coming up in a slide.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they actually, it's one of our TFM sightings, so I'll be getting up to that soon. So, our out-of-district students, as you know, are students that we have a higher level, require a higher level of care and services than we're able to provide in a public school system. Currently, we have 40 total. 20 of those are in public day schools. So public day schools, for those of you who might not know, are collaborative schools. So Cape Cod Collaborative, we had an example, Reed's, Southeastern Mass, South Coast. So all of those are public day schools. Private day schools would be like Bradley Day School, schools that aren't collaboratives, basically, that are day schools. Chamberlain, there's a bunch of others. And then we have two students currently in residential programs. And that gives us 40. And we're actually down, when I started, I was talking to the superintendent about this earlier this week. When I started, we had 76 kids out. So we've been able, really, to build our programming over the past eight years to be able to maintain our students in district and provide a pretty comprehensive array of services for them so they're able to stay in their community school with their peers. So we're pretty excited about that.
Do you mind interruptions while you're doing?
Not at all.
Not at all, Mr. Chair?
No.
So, that's really impressive, but let me dig a little from that 76 to 40. So, I was always under the impression that part of the reason that we have the 40 in this case, or the 76, was because we just, there were just not enough individual children, students, who had the same problem, and therefore was just prohibitively expensive to try and accommodate that. At the same time, the percentage of our students is rising who have IEPs. So, are you telling me that this is sort of lemonade out of lemons? In other words, as you have more and more students, the, the ability to keep them here has actually risen because you have more kids with the same problem, and therefore you can cost-effectively do it here? Is that basically what we're saying?
Yes. Yeah, I would agree with that. And I think previously, we didn't have the same level of care within our district, the same level of service providers and specialized service providers like vision, hearing, BCBAs, the Board Certified Behavior Analysts, ABA tax, so Applied Behavior Analysis Technicians. We have a very wide array of service staff now that we've been able to build over the last eight years. And it has allowed us to basically replicate a lot of the programs that they have at some of the out-of-district schools within our own buildings. So it allows us, and you're right, high incident populations, right? So we have students who, their level of need rises to the fact, to the area where we can't support them. It's more cost-effective for us as a district, and they don't have any peer group, really, when they have a certain set of disabilities. So we do our best to keep as many as we can. And I think our autism numbers and our therapeutic learning center, our emotional disability numbers have really risen over the past seven years. And I think after COVID, I would say that our social-emotional numbers probably increased by at least 20 to 30 percent. And we've just done a really good job of being able to keep up. And we've been lucky that the town has supported us in being able to staff appropriately for those populations of students.
I don't mean this to sound as, as crass as it's going to.
It's okay.
But when you're making this decision about sending them out to a public day or versus keeping them here, how much of that decision is, and maybe it's a combination of both, what's in the best interest of the child and the cost of keeping them here, including the cost of transportation, which is obviously less if they're kept here? How is that balance achieved?
So it's tough, it's a tough...
In other words, is cost even a factor?
Cost is not a factor when we think about what students need, but cost is a factor when I'm talking about, when we're speaking about programming, like opening up programs. So when we start to have a higher incidence of a particular disability, for example, at the high school, we have the CONNECT program, which is high-functioning autism. When we started to have more students in that area, we decided that it was better to keep those students here in district where they're able to be with their peers and participate in sports and all those other things that they're able to do as part of the comprehensive high school. But it also is more cost-effective to have a program to support those students than it is to, again, send them out, pay tuition, pay transportation, which has doubled over the past, you know, five, six years. So it's a combination of both, and it really is about the individual need of the student because I really need to be able to say to a parent that I can support every need that that child has within our district, and if we can't, then there's nothing else that we can do except for do what's best for that student, which would be to send them to a school that specializes in their disability category.
I get it. Thank you.
Maybe as part of that answer, you could talk a little bit of, I know, I think you have a new program at the high school, a new for students with autism. But before you do that, I just want to back up, Jeff. I know you probably didn't mean this in a negative way, but you just used the word "students with problems", and I think "students with needs" and "disabilities" is a better way to say it. I know you didn't mean it. I just wanted to back up so that you could say that because I know you didn't mean it the way it came out, yeah.
Thank you.
But yeah, if you wanted to...
Yeah. So what we've been trying to do is make our programming kind of be able to run the gamut between pre-K all the way to 12-plus. We've never had the need for a high-intensive-need ASD program at the high school, but we have, over the past eight years, really gotten a very intense population of students on the spectrum. And we've found the need to, as they're moving up, start kind of being proactive about creating programming for them. So we had two students who were here at the middle school that moved up to the high school this year, and we started building that program last year so that we could start it this year. And then next year, five more will join that group from the middle school. So it, it's just never been a need before. And now that we're, we kind of, we always kind of sit back and look, project a couple of years ahead so that we're prepared for the population of students that we have. So this has been like a two, three-year getting ready, and they opened up this year.
I just think that we're fortunate to have the resources to be able to do that.
Yes, absolutely. Very fortunate.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Oh, go ahead.
And if you're going to talk about this later, that's fine. First of all, I want to say, like I said before, speaking from experience, the program is working amazingly, for my son at least. I know that there's been increase steadily, like you were saying, of students with ASD or other issues. How big of a surge is it? And is there something that we can proactively do if we expect these trends to continue? Like, let's say it's 10% of our school population now. How long until we expect it to be 20 or 30? And what can we do to make sure that we're as prepared as possible for it?
So we're always, every year, we take a look at different programs. So we kind of do like an internal review of our programs to make sure that we're able to meet the needs, and we project up, like we see how many preschoolers we have in that area, and then we start to look at what the elementary school programming needs to look like in order to support them. It's a difficult process, and it's something that you really, you'd have to have a crystal ball to be able to know. We've probably seen our numbers at the preschool double in the category of autism over the past five to six years. And we feel, we find that the needs that are coming in are more and more intense, more and more intense. So the best thing that we can do is just keep an eye on it, keep an eye on the trends, make sure that we have all the services in place, that our staff are fully trained, and that we're able to support the needs of the students in our home schools. So we do that every year. We kind of go through a different program to make sure that we have what we need. And sometimes I go and beg for other things that we need frequently in Matt's office. So, you know, we just, we have to make sure that we have everything that they need, and that's the most important thing. So we try to, every year, review a different program so that we can be proactive about it.
Okay.
And I wish I had like an unlimited amount of money because...
Don't we all?
I don't. So it can be tough sometimes.
That's Kristen's fault.
Okay. So here's our, the tiered focus monitoring report. So we, you guys received the final report. I don't know if it just went to the chair or if it went to the entire school committee.
No, we all got it.
You all got it.
We all got it, yeah.
So it's kind of confusing. Some pieces of it, I'm arguing because I don't think that they're correct. But I'll, I put in my corrective action plan this week, so let's see where we go with that. So every three years, the Department of Ed comes and reviews special education programs in all districts across the Commonwealth. So the 23-24 year was our actual year for our tiered focus monitoring visit. And the year prior to that is called a self-evaluation year. So you spend the whole year gathering data, sending them documents that they ask for. And then this past year, the 23-24 school year, was them coming down to visit all of our programs, interviewing staff, interviewing parents, interviewing our CPAC president, Jesse, interviewing members of the school. I think one of the school committee members was interviewed. I don't remember who.
I don't remember.
No. And the principals, all different sorts of people they interview. And they collect all that data. They send out surveys to parents and collect the survey data. And then they go through all of our internal processes to see what we're strong at and what we have needs in. So this year, well, just to give you an idea of what the process is, self-assessment, file reviews, staff interviews, parent and guardian interviews, including CPAC, site visits, and the review of DESI data regarding compliance in special education and civil rights. So there's two different TFMs, and they rotate. So there's like a, one that focuses mostly on special education, which was the last one that I presented you guys three or four years ago. And this one was more of a focus on civil rights. So they go back and forth every three years between those two areas. So this year was very civil rights strong. So this is our summary of compliance criteria. I broke it all down for you so you don't need to really pay much attention to the slide, but I just wanted you to kind of see the areas that they looked at. So anything that says SE is a special education criteria that they looked at, and anything with CR is civil rights.
Should we conclude anything from the fact that... By the way, I've been through this kind of stuff in healthcare. I, I used to say to my director of nursing, I think they get paid to find things, okay? So to me, this is a tremendous report. But I noticed there is a category called commendable. And I find it hard to believe that nothing that you did was commendable. What's your conclusion from the fact that with a fine report, they chose to not say commendable about anything?
It's interesting, and I would agree. You know, I think they wouldn't have a job if everybody was commendable.
Exactly.
Right? So, so there's that. So I'm, I always take small successes, so I, I take a lot of pride in the fact that we only had one special education sighting.
I think that's a big success.
Yeah. I mean, when I first came here, the first thing I did when I was interviewing was read our last program review, and it was not anything like this one. So I really am, I feel like it's a very good representation of our district. There's some things that I don't agree with. I could talk about those in a minute. But for the most part, I think it was pretty fantastic, and I'm pretty proud of it. And when we had our only special education one a couple of years ago, we got no sightings. So that was a beautiful thing. So I think we work really hard as a team, and we've built a really strong team. So I'm very happy with the results. And I've talked to other directors. I belong to like the State Association. I'm in a leadership cohort right now, and no one, I don't know anyone who's got a commendable. So, I would love to.
Well, to me, it's commendable.
I think it's commendable. So, for special education, there were 11 criteria reviewed this session. Out of those, 10 of them were implemented, and one was partially implemented. So anything that's partially implemented or implemented at all, we have to create a special education corrective action plan for. And then we have a year of progress reporting to be able to rectify that situation so that the department clears us, and then we move right in, two years later, to the next one. The one area that we had that required corrective action was SE 54, which is professional development for our transportation providers. They did find that we do provide PD to our transportation department, but they wanted more specific professional development surrounding specific types of disabilities and what accommodations might be on a bus. So we're working on a new professional development series for the bus drivers who have students with just, with the more severe disabilities on their buses, like our special education vans with suggestions and also kind of characteristics of things that they might see, and then how you would deal with that on a bus. So we're creating kind of a procedural manual of sorts.
Is that a resident bus driver member? Please feel free to...
So every special education, transportation van or bus has a monitor on it, correct?
Correct.
Is it acceptable for that monitor to have a copy of the IEP?
Or access to it, at least.
I, I wouldn't, so I would not give access to the entire IEP.
That's a privacy issue.
It is a privacy issue. So there, so years ago, what we used to do is we would give teachers an accommodation sheet. So it would be like the PLEP A and PLEP B, which are like the accommodations and modifications that this child would need to be successful in school or in the school community, which would include transportation. The new IEP doesn't have the ability to do that, so you would have to give somebody the entire IEP. That's a humongous privacy issue because in the IEP, those of you who have students who have IEPs or have had students who have IEPs, there's a lot of private information about evaluations and disabilities and history of the child. And it just, it's not something that I would share. So I think it would be easier, and I think more beneficial to kind of have a generalized list of accommodations that are common, that the bus drivers and the monitors would be able to have at their fingertips to be able to refer to in a situation.
This sounds like a difficult corrective action plan to put together.
It is.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Well, my plan is done. Now I just have to implement everything. I submitted it, yeah.
Well, all right. The implementation sounds not easy at all.
We'll do it.
Okay. I believe you.
Any more questions on that one? So that was our only special education sighting. Civil rights, there were 18 criteria reviewed. 13 out of 18 were implemented, and we had five areas that required corrective action. So this was a little bit more intense. So I listed the five criteria there for you and what they are. And then I'll break them down for you and like explain what we got cited for. So CR3 is access to a full range of education programs. And this is where somebody asked about numbers. So right now, we have 68% of our eligible students, so students on active IEPs in the district, are served in inclusion placements. And 24.1% are in substantially separate placements. Underneath it, you will see what the state rates are in those areas. So they want us to be at 80% inclusion. We're at 68. And at 13.2% of our students in substantially separate placements.
Sorry. So, because the state has their idea of what they think is acceptable for these numbers, considering that we are a district that has a higher-than-state-average percentage, I don't think that that's a, and I understand that you said there are things that you, you felt we were cited on that we shouldn't have, but I, does the state not take exception for like a high-need, like a town like Wareham where the, the need is, because that's almost like, just, in my opinion, that's like the state's dismissing the need, and it's like, well, push these into this regular
Correct.
you know, square peg into a round hole, so that it looks better on our paperwork, so we can send you less money. That's how I'm interpreting this, is like, well, if you fit into this box, you don't need as much aid as you're getting, so make this fit, so we can stop sending you any help. That's how I'm looking at that. Like, I don't think that those numbers are necessarily a reflection of anything, any teacher or program in our district is doing wrong, and anyone who's like at home reading this slide, I want them to understand that it's not, I don't think that that's a fair ask for the state to put on a district that has a substantially higher-need population than
Correct.
what the average of the state might be.
Yeah.
So I think that they need to look into maybe possible exceptions for that, because I think that that's an unfair thing to be cited for.
Yeah, so my corrective action plan for this is, we will continue to follow the regulations of IDEA in the state, to make sure that every one of our students is in the proper programming that provides them least restrictive environment for that particular child.
I also think
Regardless of the number.
Yeah, and I think that part of that should also be like working with the state to, or to understand specific town populations, and how that that, their averages may not be realistic
Agreed.
in a day and age where more people are, more students are being diagnosed earlier, and how, and they're, that they're recognizing social, emotional, and like behavioral disability as, as opposed to what they may have, so I think their criteria might need to, to, to change.
I have this argument all the time.
Did you have your hand up?
Actually, I, almost exactly what April said. That since we have a higher population overall, it seems ridiculous for us to try to meet a statewide standard when we have higher numbers. It makes no sense.
I'll go one step further. I think the statewide standard, since it's based on an average, which could be meaningless in any given district, is just laziness on the part of the state, and I would push back very specifically that they have no business telling you that the average is right for us.
Right.
It's just, to me, it's just totally bogus.
Yeah.
If I was going to take the other side of that same argument, though, I've always been told that the most expensive way to handle a, an inclusion, a special education student is in fact inclusion. Is this their way of making sure that we're not pushing people into sub-separate just to save money?
I actually would beg to differ on that one. I think that
I've been told that, I'm not saying it's true.
I think the comprehensiveness of your programming is much greater if you have comprehensive programming and a variety of programming, like we have here, we have a lot of programming here. To be able to properly staff that in a way that supports the needs of our students is a lot more costly than our students in inclusion, a lot more costly.
Interesting.
Manpower alone. Yeah.
Well, tell them that.
Trust me, I do.
I would just ask the question then, of you, can you assure all of us here that you don't push students to substantially separate programs if they would have succeeded in an inclusion program?
No, and all of our students, so it's interesting, the way that the state measures substantially separate, when people hear substantially separate, they think that a child is locked in a room all day, right? And they don't move, they don't do anything. That is the farthest thing from the truth. The state measures it by 40%, so they have to spend at least 40% of their time out of that substantially separate setting. We provide access to as much as any student can tolerate where they can be successful, and we do that with all of our students. So it is a little bit of a skewed view, because if I were to take 12% more of our students who aren't ready, or aren't able to participate more in the general ed setting, then I'm doing them a disservice just to get to an 80% number that the state tells me that I have to get at. It just, yeah.
Choice?
So earlier you asked the question about the percentage of special ed, and so last time we, last time I heard the number, it was somewhere between 25 and 30. So where is that number now?
It's a little bit higher than that now.
Higher than 30? And how is it across the schools? Are the schools all about the same percentage, or is?
Now, the high schools, the high school and the elementary school always have a higher percentage because they have more students. You have to remember that you're talking about, you know, 500 students versus 1,000, and
You shouldn't change the percentage, though, should you?
Right, the percentages
Well, at the elementary school, the variety, it's the, the variety of grades that we have there, so our preschool program, because our preschool program is a special education program, basically almost every student in there
That makes sense.
Right, has an IEP. So, but, you know, besides the peers that pay to come, to be the, the typical peers for us. So we're starting out with students coming in, and we're at almost, I think, 100 at the preschool level now. And there's always, like, we're always having to open new programs, having to open new classrooms, having to figure out ways to kind of maneuver within budget to be able to support all of the students, and it's a great deal of students and a great deal of work to support those students. So, and the high school always has like bigger numbers, too, because
More grades.
we have that balloon of the 18 to 22-year-olds that kind of, they stay with us. So they're there, they get there, and now they're staying for that extended period of time. So they always kind of have a bubble, so their percentages always look different, but it's not necessarily because we're, yeah, I just, yeah.
It's okay, I'm not going to hold it against you.
Yeah, I know, I know.
But that would be true across the state, then, too, at the high school level and the elementary level, or preschool as well?
Right.
Okay, and we still exceed that for whatever demographic reasons.
There's not many districts our size who have as large of a preschool program as we have.
Okay.
At all, so.
So that number is over 30?
Yeah, we're over 30. I would say we're pushing, we might be pushing 34 right now. I, again, I have to get in, and like, once the e-Sbed system settles down and everything rules the right, the way it's supposed to, I can get more specific numbers for you, but the last I checked, when we were running numbers, it was like 33-point-something percent.
And what is the state number?
We, 20?
22-0?
80%, no, wait, 22, 20? Looking at Matt.
Oh, I didn't see it.
I thought it went down somewhere when we were talking.
That's higher, too.
It's 20.2.
20.2, 20%. Yeah.
So we're 75% higher? Is that the right math? I mean, that's
Desi says we're 28%.
Oh.
But, I mean, there are many behind.
Yeah, that was, so we're looking at two years ago, the data.
Jeff?
Just a quick question. If, if I'm a preschool-aged child with an, with an IEP, we have a preschool program.
We do.
If some, if a district doesn't have a preschool program, they have to go where?
So there are some private preschools that are opening, that have opened within the last five years.
And then the district pays the private?
No, we're not responsible for paying for that. If we have a program, we have one, if we don't have one, because we're not required to educate a child at that age, even with special needs, so we can
We're not.
provide services, we have to provide services, but we don't have to run a preschool. So it's not a law that we have to have a preschool.
I'm confused. If we're providing services, we're required to provide services?
If they're eligible and in our district, and we test them, yes.
So if we don't have a program, and we, then we don't have to pay for those services?
We have to provide the services, but we don't necessarily have to have a preschool program. So back in the day, we used to do like, oh no, this just went off.
So we've got a, we've got a private preschool program in the town,
Mm-hmm.
and we have no preschool program in, in the district?
If we didn't have one, yeah.
Okay. So we could say to the parent, go to this private preschool program, and we don't need to pay for that?
We don't have to pay for it, but we have to provide services. So if a student needs, let's say, speech and OT, we would have to run clinics if we didn't have a preschool, and that's what we used to do years ago, long before I was here.
Where would we provide those services?
They would come into the buildings, and our service providers would have clinics. So we still have a speech clinic that we run for students who only need speech services, and a lot of students that go to Catholic school, for example, and don't attend Wareham public schools, but live in Wareham, will come to our schools for services.
So they'd get a unique set of services based upon their IEP?
Correct.
But they would not be in a preschool
Program.
per se,
Correct.
which means they're not getting the full benefit of being in a preschool?
Correct.
And if the parent wants the full benefit, they would have to pay for it at a private preschool?
There's a lot of different ways that that looks, because typically, the majority of our students are either very high-need, or they are on the spectrum. And those students, there's a lot of ABA centers that provide ABA services for students from early intervention on, and there's early intervention centers as well, and those are all covered under insurance, and then we get them in our preschool when they turn 2.10 is when we start looking at them. So there are services out there, we have many parents who send their children here, but also go to ABA services after school at an ABA center that's covered by their insurance. So there, there's, the early intervention system is humongous, and it, Kennedy Donovan Center, if you remember them, they've closed since then.
They're closed?
They closed since then, yeah. So they, there are many different area services that do early intervention services, but most of them are done like through medic, like the medical insurance covers most, for depending on the need. But we are responsible for providing services. So if like, if a child needed speech, we would have to provide speech, which we would do through a clinic, but we're fortunate because we have a program that does all of that.
But we're not teaching them to read?
Well, we're teaching them pre-literacy skills.
No, I understand, but that's one of the general things you might learn in preschool, along with the other services. Very complicated, thank you.
It is complicated. Okay, can we move on? Yes? Uh-oh, did I? The arrow, right?
Yeah.
Sorry. You can just stay next to me if you want, except you have to take notes, so you can't. Okay. So 10C is student discipline, and what they do for student discipline is they look at our problem resolution complaints on compliance. So problem resolution system, for those of you that don't know, is a system where parents or community members, anybody can file a complaint with the state, and then there's a group of professionals at the state level that review those complaints, investigate them, and provide us with their findings, and request corrective action from the district. Last year, we had two disciplinary compliance hits, and because of that, we were flagged for this one. So we did, for this particular case, the final PRS report has since been responded to, it's been resolved through a correction, corrective action plan, and this plan mandated training to all administrators on due process and disciplinary practices, and so the training's already been completed, and we've already submitted all of that to the state. So that one's actually completed.
Choice?
Without giving us details, can you just give us an example of what that complaint might be?
So due process complaints are when we don't follow our discipline policy. So for example, you're not behaving, so I send you home, but I don't go through due process. I say, go home, and you're going to stay home for a couple of days and come back when you're feeling better, you know, when you're ready to behave, and not following the process.
Okay.
So it could be being a hearing and a
Right, a letter, a hearing opportunity, yeah.
It's not necessarily special ed-related, it could be
It could be anything. So these civil rights are for all students in the district.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
And just to say, this could also just include if, the incidents that you talk about, are these situations where we were actually at fault and had done, had not followed due process, or is this just that someone complained that they felt we hadn't?
No, it's, so any PRS complaints that flag like this are ones that they found non-compliance.
Okay.
Yep, so which means that we, we didn't do something the way that we were supposed to, and they gave us a corrective action for it.
Okay, I didn't know if it was something we're, you know,
No, the complaints
found guilty here, or just
Yeah, they flag out a lot of complaints that they don't feel are valid, or that don't fall under their jurisdiction, because some don't. Some would go to like the Office of Civil Rights and other different places. These are pretty much just compliance.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyone else? CR 17 is use of physical restraint. This is another one that I'm contesting. They are saying that even though we have a physical restraint policy and procedure, we train our staff in CPI, we have PBIS, they still found that we don't include methods of preventing student violence, self-injury, as behavior, and suicide, and that we don't have a description, an explanation of the program's alternatives to physical restraint. So, and Matt and I actually discussed this last week, I think we do need to implement something about suicide. I think that's something that is really important to kind of train our staff more effectively on, so we're going to be looking at that. And also, we do do part two, and that's what I'm arguing with them. So we have PBIS from elementary to middle, which is positive behavior supports for students that are not physical restraint policies, right? And we spend a lot of time building those programs and overseeing them in our schools. And our CPI, which is crisis prevention intervention, has two pieces. It has a verbal de-escalization piece, de-escal, is that, oh my gosh?
Yeah.
I said that word like three times. And then it has the physical restraint, which is like last resort, because every time that we put hands on a child to keep them safe, or to keep others safe, we have to report that to the state. We have to, there's a whole big policy at the state level. We have to notify the parents within a certain amount of time, we have to report it to the state. We have to report quarterly to the state about how many restraints we've had. So it's not something that happens very often, and we really take a lot of pride in the fact that we don't do that, and so I was a little upset with this finding, and so we do have to make some tweaks to it, but I'm going to be addressing it in the corrective action plan.
Did they have anything specific, any specific examples of what we did wrong?
No, no. They just, I, they, the most specific they got was that we don't discuss student violence, self-injury, as behavior, and suicide, that was the most specific that they got.
In general with the student body, or after an incident?
Staff.
Oh, it's for staff, okay.
That's it, and I also don't agree with all of that, but I do agree with some of it, I think that we could do better, and so we're working on a way to make that better.
The corrective action plan, if you push back, as you apparently are going to do at times, does the corrective action plan have to be approved?
Yes.
So theoretically, you could be going back and forth, back and forth, until they're satisfied or you're satisfied.
Correct.
Thank you.
Actually, the, in the draft report, which I don't think that you guys received a copy of, we had five more sightings in civil rights, and I was able to argue all of them and provide additional information to the department, so that they dropped them and marked them as implemented. So you can. Typically, once you get the final report, which is what we're talking about this evening, it's really an appeal process, or you try to work through it through the corrective action and progress report process over the next year.
April?
So, I know that last year, policy review, we, we went over the restraint policy, so I feel like that what you said, like, I know that those things are in place, my question is for the first part of it, like, methods of preventing student violence, self-injury, as behavior, and suicide, like, aside from, you know, like, we're trying to pay attention to kids that are isolating, looking into like, you know, incidences of, of bullet, or any of like, of those kinds of things, what are methods that would exist to, for, for staff, right? Because that's a, that's a big ask, and I know that it's, everyone does like all of their stuff, but having been personally affected by suicide in my life, like, you know, how do you, a lot of the people that are, are thinking with those ideations are not the ones that are talking about it. So what kind of training, aside from, you know, having social workers, having the social emotional supports that we have, and like, what more would they want, or is it just they want more conversations and have documented conversations that this is being done? Is that, is it more of a, of a documentation, like, trail that they're looking for, as opposed to everyday actions of keeping your eyes open, paying attention to the student body, listening to other stu, those kinds of things?
I think they want actionable things, right? So they, all of our, when you think of the large amount of mental health staff that we have in our district, between guidance counselors, social workers, school adjustment counselors, school psychologists, all of these people, and then being fortunate enough to have that grant through High Point that also gives us substance abuse support, and suicide support, and mental health support, with full-time clinicians that are billing insurance in our school buildings, seeing our kids as the overflow of parents that can't get out, don't have the resources to get out, can't find a mental health provider in the community. So we have a tremendous amount of supports, and those people are all trained. I think what they're looking for is a wider span of people keeping their eyes open for these issues. So I think that we do a great job of training our mental health staff, but I think they're looking for more substantial training for staff in general surrounding these issues.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else? No? 24 is curriculum review, another one that I tried to argue, and they, I got it down a little bit. We do have a curriculum review policy, and it does include all of these identified areas. What they're asking us to do is have teachers have more voice, instead of department chairs and the people who make the policy and the school committee. They want the teachers to be able to have a voice in all educational materials, to make sure that they, you know, don't have bias on race, color, sex, gender identity, all of the identified areas, right? So we're actually, Matt and I talked about it, we're going to add some of that training into our mandated training for staff next year, so that they're able to kind of have a little bit of background through that training to be able to meet this criteria. Because we really do it as a district, and we have a policy on it that meets all of this, but they want it to be more widespread to actual teachers who are teaching in the classrooms every day.
Aren't individual teachers reviewing that as they're teaching the curriculum anyway, though? Wouldn't they have to, like, if they found something that was objectionable, wouldn't they then bring that to the forefront?
I don't know, of course.
Right.
I think they're looking for more of a formal process.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would assume the other would happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Getting input is one thing. They're not looking for the teachers to approve the curriculum, correct?
They're looking for the teachers to feel empowered to be able to speak up if they identify these situations. And they want us to formally train them and say to them, you have the power to do this, which is kind of unspoken, we do it anyway, but
So if you provide evidence, they've done this in mandated training, and we expect any teacher to come forward throughout the school year, that probably checks this box.
Exactly.
Okay.
But they want them empowered, but they're not accountable, correct?
Essentially.
That's a great situation for any person. You have power, but you're not accountable. Wow, okay.
25 is institutional self-evaluation. So we're required every three years to have an outside agency come in and review our programs. Since I've been here, I've used Walker twice to review our programs, and you guys have all received copies of those last two. I have asked Walker, I called Walker and discussed this sighting with them. They feel as though we provided evidence of all of this when they did our review. They're going to do an amendment to the review to include the evidence, so I'm going to be providing them with a bunch of documentation to support this, and that they're going to write an amendment to that report, and that's going to be my corrective action plan, because I do believe that we do this, because it just basically says that we don't, we don't address extracurricular activities, athletics, when it comes to protected classes, and I don't, I don't agree with that. I think we do that, and I think we do it very well, and I think we're very inclusive in every area.
That's what I thought when I read that.
Yeah. So they're just going to, Walker's just going to write a little amendment to it that addresses this, and I'm just going to add some additional documentation to them, to the department.
Jeff?
Just as a coach, I haven't the foggiest idea, after two decades, whether any of the kids who came out for the tennis team had IEPs. I never obviously asked them, no one ever told me. No one ever told me. So, so how, and yet, I feel like someone, the principal, the athletic director, is being held accountable to make sure that there are enough kids who feel they have access, that athletics is approachable, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not sure how we go about doing this.
Well, there's a lot of like built-in fail safes for this already, because if you think about it, our leagues that we, just take sports, for example, our leagues provide all of this language. And when parents sign up for sports--
Including the MIAA.
Correct. So, this is all kind of built into that. So, it's a little confusing when I got this, because in our care program, in our sale program, in our clubs, in our, you know, any of the other activities that we have going on, we, interestingly, I was talking to Jane Von Dullis, part of her grant is that she is able to be all-inclusive. It's part of her grant. She wouldn't get the grant if she weren't running an inclusive program. So, Jane and I had a discussion, and her grants are actually going to be part of the information that we give to the department to show them that we do provide equal opportunity for all students to participate regardless of any protected class. So, I think we do it. I just think that they didn't get enough to feel like we did it.
They didn't have enough of it written down on paper--
Correct.
--even though it's something that we do as second nature.
Correct. Any questions on that one? So, next steps, create and submit the corrective action plan. I've already created it. I submitted it. God bless you.
Bless you.
Two days ago to the department. So, now I wait for them to come back with necessary edits, and then we go into our annual progress report. So, I have to give them dates in my corrective action plan of when I will accomplish the task by, and then I have to provide them with monthly progress reports until everything's resolved and they approve it. And that is it. Any other questions?
Thank you. You did a good job answering all our, the thing. Thank you.
I do have one more question, actually. Scott's not here tonight, but in one of the conversations, I can't remember, I think it was school council, we had a conversation around budget cuts, and there was a program at the high school, Effective School Solutions, and they're no longer there. A part of it, I thought, was budget cuts, but is it true that they're at the elementary school?
That is correct.
So, it was my understanding that they weren't at the high school anymore because we could do it a different way, maybe better? Is that true?
I think that--
For less money?
I think that the principal, the principal and the leadership at the high school decided that it wasn't effective for their needs. It wasn't being as effective as they wanted it to be for their needs. So, we shifted it, and it kind of like looking at a root cause analysis of different things, which we always have to do. We started to think that maybe if we start earlier, we'll be able to support the students to be successful at an earlier age so that when they're moving up, we won't have the need for as many of these spots in these programs for behavior and social emotional if we can support them early. So, we made the decision to shift that program to the elementary school. So, it wasn't a budget cut, because that's not something that comes out of the operational budget.
Where does it come out of?
It comes out of circuit breaker. So, it's not anything--
Well, so, it originally comes out of the budget, and it's reimbursable.
That, that's not even reimbursable.
Well, I mean, circuit breaker isn't just money we get, it's reimbursement for money that we spend.
Right, but on out-of-district. So, out-of-district transportation and services that meet a threshold. So, circuit breaker reimburses us a percentage of services that reach whatever the threshold is set at. So, this year it was forty-five, forty--
Lower for transportation.
Transportation was lower.
And construction.
And it was, but the threshold, the students' needs, the cost of educating the student in the district or out of district has to meet a threshold, and I think it's forty-five or forty-six thousand dollars. So, until we spend that much money, we don't get any circuit breaker money back.
Right.
Yeah.
So, this is an expense to the district, and then we receive reimbursement for it back?
Correct.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe, at a percentage. So, I mean, it's still, so it was my understanding that it was not inexpensive.
No, it is not. It is not inexpensive.
So, I guess my question is, if it wasn't effective at the high school, why do we have it at the elementary school? My, second part to my question is, is it different people at the elementary school?
No. Uh, yes. One is the same, two are different, because what we opted for, it's almost like buying a car package, in a sense, right? Like, you can opt for different levels, different packages. So, our needs at the elementary school were such that we went with one clinician instead of two. We had two at the high school, so the cost is less. And one of the people that is running the program has remained the same, but one of the clinicians is different, and the mental health tech is different. That's a new position to us.
Okay. So, I don't know about people who do that type of work, but I know that a high school teacher wouldn't go teach at the elementary school. So, counselor who is doing that job at the high school, are they equipped to do that job at the elementary school?
They're all licensed clinicians. Yep, they can work with any--
For any age.
Correct.
But do you understand why? I'm not, I'm not doubting their abilities. It's just, is it specialized to a certain age?
It's specialized to mental health and behavior, and behavioral health, so that their licensure covers any age group. So, go ahead.
So, with that being said, if there was an example of a elementary student, and they're very clinical in their responses, like asking the questions that they would have asked a high school student, you can't phrase things the same way to a first grader. Who is making sure for our students that that person who's essentially, right, a contractor for our district, is tailoring those conversations to be age-appropriate so that it's de-escalated correctly and not misinterpreted as, you can ask, you know, like an older student who has a little bit more comprehension, if they intend to harm themselves, how, if you have a plan, do you have a plan, whatever? Like, a first grader's not going to understand the context and may answer more matter-of-fa-- like, "Oh, I need to come up with something to answer this," but it may not be the correct context. So, is there someone overseeing to make sure that that's being done?
Yeah. So, when they, when ESS comes into our buildings, it's not like we just let them go and they just go and do their thing and then leave. So, Bethany and I, Dr. Chandler and I, work very closely with them. We meet with them every week. They meet with our BCBA and our school psychologists and social workers. They all work in tandem, and they work as part of that school community. So, they support general ed teachers, special ed teachers, and I think, to your point, you're not getting the same type of behaviors at the elementary school as you would get when the students start to get older and more mature and in the high school. So, I'm not concerned about their ability to work with different age groups, but I do understand your point about, are they able to shift their practice to younger students? And I would say, first of all, yes, and second of all, it's a different set of circumstances. Like, we don't have the same issues at the elementary level that we have at the high school level as far as mental health and behaviors. It's not, it looks very different, and Dr. Chandler and I work very closely with them and monitor everything that they're doing and meet with them frequently and observe them, and they're also, we have our own staff that work in tandem with them every day. So, there's constantly, it's a collaboration. It's not just them on their own doing things with our students.
I'm just curious, so what the cost is, the elementary school, for the year?
I don't know.
Two hundred and forty-two thousand.
Is that all?
That's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money. They provide, but there's a different level of service that we're getting from that. So, we get professional development. They do professional development for our teachers. They do professional development for our paraprofessionals, which is, has been huge. And it's very meaningful and high-quality professional development that our paraprofessionals are getting, and they're actually enjoying it, and we're getting good positive feedback about it, and more people are signing up to take those PDE sessions. They also provide mentoring and coaching to some of our newer teachers who are working with this population of students, and they do wraparound services with parents at home as well. So, they're doing wraparound services, helping parents get resources in the community, doing family sessions, things that are outside of the scope of what our practitioners do in our buildings, because it's past our, our hours of operation. It's past our contractual hours for our unit aid members. So, they're able to kind of pick up the pieces on the backend that we might not always be able to catch in a comprehensive way, to support families and then increase engagement and hopefully increase attendance and decrease behaviors and decrease office visits and increase student success and positive outcomes for students. So, that's our hope.
Right. I know, I know you're trying to do the best for our students, but when you have a third-party company like that also, I'm guessing that there might be the possibility of turnover also. Well, there's always the possibility, even if it was our own employee, right? But is there more turnover when it's a third-party company like that?
I mean, every, we can get turnover anywhere.
I agree.
Yeah, we have had, we had one, when they were at the high school, we had one therapist whose husband got moved somewhere in his job, and she left, and they brought in a different therapist, a different clinician. The two clinicians that we have in there right now, one of them actually applied for a job with us, and I would have taken her in a heartbeat, but we have a non-compete no-compete with them, so I can't hire somebody that they bring into our system.
Whoa.
But, yeah, that's with most agencies. We can't--
Well, otherwise--
Otherwise, we would just steal everybody's employees.
I'm going to give Jeff the last question, just in the interest of time, because we do have to move on here. So, Jeff?
So, now I have two questions.
Yeah. You get one.
Mine would have been quicker.
Just FYI, the state of Massachusetts has recently taken action with respect to non-compete clauses. They've always been tenuous in terms of enforceability. So, the fact that we've signed an agreement with a non-compete may, in fact, not even be legal anymore. So, you may want to look at that. If we've got an outstanding employee we'd like to hire, and that's the only reason we're not doing it. FYI, or the next time you want to sign that contract with a non-compete in it, scratch it out, initial it, and say, "Sorry, there's no non-compete in the state of Massachusetts anymore," certainly for this kind of situation. But that's not my question. That's my comment. And I feel like I should know the answer to this question, but that forty-plus thousand that you were talking about, which is, I remember when it was in the low thirties, or mid-thirties anyway, is per student?
Per student.
Correct? So, when we're paying almost a quarter of a million dollars, how is that quarter of a million dollars allocated?
Quarter of a million dollars for this service?
This service.
Allocated in what sense? Like, what do we get from it? How, now--
How is it allocated in terms of adding to the cost of providing so it can be included in the circuit breaker?
Right. So, I had this conversation, actually, we just had a circuit breaker audit, and Al, oh my God, D'Agostino, who was in charge of that, was down here, and it was one of the questions that I asked him, we would have to divide it by the amount of students that are serviced by the amount that we pay for those providers, and then--
With the assumption that the services to any individual student, you're averaging out?
Correct.
Ah.
Yeah.
Okay. And so, that would be true for a BCBA or a social worker, et cetera?
Correct.
So, the way it gets built into the forty-plus thousand is literally dividing the salary by the number of students--
Correct.
--with whom they interact.
With whom they service. They, yeah, because they have, there's, they service programs, so that we know how many students are in that program that they service.
I understand.
And parents also have to agree to have them do the part outside of the school. Like, parents have to sign on to get the wraparound services. Some parents say, "I don't want it."
It's in the IEP, isn't it?
Wraparound services or not.
Ah.
So, like, if you want home counseling, or you want family counseling at home, they do that, but they, they don't force it upon you. You have to accept it. You have to say, "Yes, I want that piece of it."
And if you don't know the answer to this question, that's fine, but what percentage of our thirty-three-point-something percent of our students, literally one in three students, actually go beyond the forty-plus thousand dollars in terms of costs?
Less than five.
Less than five?
Yeah. In district students, less than five, because it would be students who have either one-to-one paraprofessionals or nurses with them for medical reasons, or students who necessitate a tremendous amount of equipment, or are low incidence students, like students with vision impairments, blind and vision impairments, or students who are deaf and hard of hearing, who require us to bring in outside services from Perkins School for the Blind, Reed's Deaf and Hard of Hearing program.
So, seventy-five percent sounds great, but if it applies to a very small percentage of our students--
Correct.
Now, I would assume for the forty students that you showed earlier, it's a much higher percentage.
Yes.
Almost a hundred percent, maybe?
We get, what percentage do we get back from them? Oh, no.
No. What percentage of the students of the forty that are not--
They all meet threshold.
I would say--
Every single one of them.
Do you want to have a student have a lower cost?
Even the coll, even the collaborative students?
Our lowest-cost school currently is High Roads, and that school costs forty-something thousand. It just barely meets threshold, and all of our other schools are more expensive than that.
So, circuit breaker sounds good until you do the math.
It also sounds good until you have to sit and do it.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Melissa, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Illuminating discussion, good question.
Yeah, I would ask just that, maybe we circle back in like, in a couple of months, after a little bit more time goes by, maybe you could come back and we could talk about that. Maybe some folks from the elementary school could come and tell us how.
Can I just, because like, I know that you, we had a lot of conversation around bringing this group in. These are programs that have our most challenging students, and we're trying to find a way to provide them, the families and the teachers with support. We really looked at this program. We called other districts that were using them to see, you know, how it was going. Scott and Andrea Cannon actually went to Connecticut and visited this school that was using the program. It didn't work out as well as we had hoped at the, at the high school, and we decided to go in a different direction, but there were certainly, there are definitely benefits to the program, and it just happened at the same time we were having issues at the elementary, and we, and we said, "Well, maybe their approach would be better at the elementary level." And there were, you know, there were issues at the elementary that we, some of them were in, part of the report that we were cited on, that this is a, this is a group that could come in and provide our teachers with the support and admin that they need. You know, there's no magic bullet, there's, you know, we're optimistic, things are heading in the right direction and looking good, but I think it's a good idea to come back and say--
Yeah, because I'd love to hear that.
If it doesn't work, then they're not going to be here next year.
Right.
But, but we're, but this was a real area need that we were, you know, optimistic that this group could come in and give us support there.
Well, you know, I hope it's successful. I just hope, we always try to spend money wisely.
Right.
Kevin?
Absolutely.
Actually, I wanted to make just one, one more quick question. You didn't notice me earlier.
Oh, quick.
What's our success rate as far as students who need short-term services? For example, a kid that comes in kindergarten that maybe has a stutter or speech impediment. Surely, they shouldn't need speech all twelve years, not, there's a problem if they do, but what kind of success rate, turnover rate do we have of children who no longer need services as they progress through our system?
So, that is a very wide question, and if I could definitely dig deeper into that, and I'd have to break it down by what service, so I'd have to do like OTPT, speech. I would say that we do have a good success rate. I couldn't give you exact numbers.
Go ahead, I'll wait.
Yeah, but I could definitely look into that.
Maybe, yeah, when you report back, that's something like--
I didn't mean right now.
Not right now.
What, you get off an IEP completely over the course of--
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like, do we have a good, positive--
All right, now, I'm breaking my own rules. Thank you, Ms. Faye.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
I agree with my colleague. Having you back would, nice job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, a follow-up would be great.
No pressure on Kristin, no, but you're up for Director of Finance report?
Sure, yes.
Sure, yes. So in your packet, you have the year-to-date budget as of September 30th. So really, we're three months into fiscal year, but really, a lot of our operations start in September, with everyone coming back to school. So we've had a chance to have...
Can you turn mic on, please?
A few payrolls, is that, is that, a few payrolls that we've been able to check our salary budget to actual. So we've had a lot of changes since when we budgeted, as, as we always do. But right now, we are running a small deficit in salaries overall, but I'm not overly concerned about it at this point. One, because we have some open positions that are factored in, and if, if and when those positions are filled, that could bring that deficit down. And also, we have some, it's, the year is long, so we, the important thing is that we just keep an eye on it, on those salaries. Some of the things that impacted it, you know, as they do every year, we budget for positions, and if people leave during the year or over the summer, people are hired either lesser or higher than what they were budgeted for. And sometimes you have some salary savings, and sometimes you have some salary deficits. And we pretty much broke even on, on those. So we don't have those salary savings from filling positions that sometimes we can count on. Another thing is, we did have about twenty-one staff members right now who have gotten and advanced in their degree, so they've moved on the salary scale from when, from where they were when we did the budget. So that impacted a good deal, so that is something that, I mean, the good news is, is now we know that, so we've, I've set them at that degree for next year, but it is impacting this year. So that's something, like I said, every month, we'll be looking at as, as we go through and just, and see where we're at with that. Some other areas that are the big areas of concern sometimes, out-of-district tuition. Right now, we're doing well with that. We have still some contracts out, but factoring those in, we are not in a deficit in out-of-district tuition at this time, so that, so that is good. We have, we have some room. And that's always a moving target. We always have students coming into placements, leaving placements, changing placements. So again, that's something that just has to be watched closely all the time. And finally, we do have some, some transportation concerns. You know, like every school district, we are, we wish we had more bus drivers than we have. So that's impacting us. And in fact, we have some routes that, for example, that we used to be able to service in-house that we've had to put out. We've had a student that was on a shared ride on our bus that because of, of certain needs, that student now has an out-of-district transport, so that is adding to us. So right now, I would say that's another area we have to, we have to look at, but those can change. You know, if we can hire some bus drivers, or sometimes, and that's, like I said, we have students that are moving in and out of placements, so that can always change. Two things that are, that are working in our favor, while that will help, is that we do have, we've been able to build up the transportation revolving account, so that's always something that we can fall back on, on, you know, on a last, as a last resort. So we do have those funds to fall back on if we find that we're just not making anything up along the way. And again, too, with some of the, some of our expenditures, we have been able to, to build up our circuit breaker account, so that's also a fall, a fallback. So we have some, some safety nets built in, which is good. I really don't have anything more specific, other than those, those couple of things that we just have to keep a close eye on as we do. So I don't know if anyone has any questions at this time.
Joyce?
I just have a couple of questions about things, actually, you mentioned. So the out-of-district transportation, those numbers on the warrants, I've seen the numbers have been high. And the utilities, so you've obviously encumbered utilities.
Correct, correct.
But I've seen some of those bills, too, and are they, are they in line with what you've budgeted for?
I've been looking more closely at the elementary school. I haven't taken a good, good look yet at, at all of the utilities. At the elementary school, we are lower than where we were this, this time period last year, so that is good, because that's where, you know, I was always concerned about. So I think right now, and we're, we run about a month behind, so the utility bills that have hit, it's really just, we've paid July, August, and we're just starting to pay October, September's now. So I think once we get, I like to look at that once I get into December to see where we're at, if we have to adjust the encumbrances. So nothing is really standing out to me, but again, that's not an area that I've, I've been focusing on yet.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have two quick questions. Is there a way, as we enter in the budget season now, forecasting maybe degree attainment or step increase, not step increases, but increases because of another degree that a teacher might earn? Is there a way of estimating that more accurately?
There is, and I gotta do a better job at that. But yes, because it's part of the, before taking classes, teachers need to provide us with a course approval form. And so we can use those, and on those, they can tell us that, you know, what degree they're working towards and when they might anticipate they're going to have it. So we can have a little bit of an idea of where, where it's going to go.
And my second question is, you had mentioned, like, maybe sometimes you hire someone less money than was budgeted, but sometimes it's more. If we have a certain figure that a teacher was going to be hired at, say like step three or whatever, would we hire someone above a step three then? Or would we put that as a parameter or a limit?
We would, we would hire above a step three, if it's the right person.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you try?
I try, I try. I, I, I try to get the best people for the...
Which we all want, obviously. Okay, okay. Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, I would, I would agree. The best person is worth what, what you, needs to get them. You know, it's penny wise and pound foolish to do otherwise, so I agree with you. It may cost more in the short term, but... So one comment and one question. One, as you're going through these issues, it just occurs to me that there are so many things that I would characterize as uncontrollable in your world, and that must be incredibly frustrating. So I'm sympathetic, number one.
Thank you.
The question I have is, I don't remember when it was exactly, but there is a national problem with attendance, which we've talked about, chronic absenteeism of students. But there's also a national trend of higher staff absences. And we used to report, in fact, this committee asked for that report to be, when the principals came in, and I feel like we didn't do it the last time. Could we make a habit of having that happen, too? Because when I looked at the line items, there were some substitute, both pairs as well as teacher, usage of substitutes that are, in some cases, significantly higher than budget. And I don't know whether that's controllable or not, but I would like to think it's somewhat controllable. But please, let's have the principals report on that number as well in the future.
Good idea. Thank you. April?
To Jeff's point, are we utilizing subs for positions that had been essentially eliminated at the end of last year's budget, so replacing but not formally replacing teachers? So I'm just asking.
Wow.
No, we're not.
I'm just asking that question with a higher sub number. And then with, in regards to, where are we actively looking to hire? Like, are, just based on numbers of where, what was eliminated, but was, like, if a position was done, is it because we're placing retirements? Are, are there positions that need to be filled because they either, someone retired or we, they're, that position, someone left the district?
Correct.
And are, or are we hiring anything, like, like, I know that inside, I'm not saying that this is necessarily happening, but I know in some, like, former jobs I had, a corporate position, a position would be eliminated, but then brought back with a different title, although it's the same job. Is there, is there anything, like, are we looking to still, realizing that that need may still need to be fulfilled, so now we're like, needing to now hire someone new for a similar position that doesn't exist anymore? Or is it all just like vacancies that we have yet to be able to fill consistently?
It's some of that, positions that we've not been able to fill, people leaving, we have people that have found other jobs in other districts and we have to replace them. And we have had a student come in that we required to hire someone as a one-on-one, because it's an IEP. So that's generally it, but we're not, you know, hiring people just to fill phantom positions that weren't really on a position, we're not doing anything like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dr. DeAndrea, superintendent's report?
Okay, so you have a copy of the superintendent's newsletter, and there are payroll and bill warrants that I ask that you approve.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, tie zero zero.
Okay, and then we have some obsolete, it says obsolete furniture, but it's really obsolete equipment. And I think that you have received all of that in your packet. And Bonnie is here. She's got some exciting stuff to show you about some of the IT obsolete list, so I'll let her begin.
We love when Bonnie's here.
I'm saving you money, how's that?
We love that more.
That's what I thought. So every time, April, you ask me, every time.
I know what the question is.
Do you?
Yes.
Okay, so after the, I wasn't, I was out of town for the last time that we did obsolete equipment, but the time before that, at a department meeting, we had a conversation that we would show sort of what happens. So the biggest thing that, the only thing that we recycle that is at all usable anymore are Chromebooks. Some teacher laptops, but basically Chromebooks. So when I tell you that we are going to mark a Chromebook obsolete, and we have an e-waste recycling company that comes in and takes it for free, from a Chromebook, this is actually what goes to the company. And the reason that, this is all, and the reason that is, and I have to give credit to Carl Sebourn at the elementary school for making my show and tell list. So at all three schools, all of my IT specialists take a Chromebook that is not working, and if there's a part that's not working, then obviously, we get rid of it. But other than that, they take it apart, and they use those to replace, and I actually have some numbers to share with you. But they made me a show and tell kit. So these are speakers from Chromebooks, and if we had to purchase them, it would be $9.99. There's actually some students at the elementary school who, as a reward, get to go help in the tech office, and so they actually did this for me. So this is a daughter board, don't ask me what it does.
What kind of board?
Daughter board.
Dodder?
No, like granddaughter.
Ah, thank you.
This is battery, it's $24.99. The Wi-Fi part is $9.99. The keyboard, if we have to buy them, are $50. Back covers, screens. The only thing in three years that I have purchased, or the department has purchased for the schools to repair Chromebooks have been screens. And the reason is that not all screens are compatible with all Chromebooks. So we have had to purchase some, they're $32 each. Trim cut for an abezele, you get the idea. Right? And this is the bottom cover. So at the elementary school, and I would say these numbers are, what we do at the elementary school is about the same as what we do at the middle school and high school together. So far this year, they have replaced thirty-four screens with ones they took out of something else for a total savings of $1,088. They have replaced twenty-three keyboards for $1,150, twenty back covers. They took, so we, at the elementary school in particular, actually, at all three schools, we have testing carts. And they serve a different purpose in the three schools, but at the elementary school, testing carts are used when they're doing NWEA testing, in particular for the littles, the youngest students. Patrick Roach generally takes the cart into a classroom and just hands it all out because he knows all of them are charged and we're ready to go. There's forty Chromebooks in that cart. Those Chromebooks don't have cameras, because they're, they're Chromebooks that have been given back to the tech department because the cameras are broken. That's not something the guys can replace, so we just, they put them in the testing cart. That allows those other forty Chromebooks to be actually used for students. So that's about $8,000. And then over the summer at the elementary school, they took the pieces parts and they built 142 Chromebooks. Like Frankenstein'd them together. That's over $25,000. So altogether at the elementary school, $39,657.40. If nothing, if not, if not exact. And I would say double that for the other two schools. So about $80,000 if we actually had to purchase parts. In addition to that, because this last time we did recycling, we did have some iPhones. The reason we had iPhone, they're old iPhones, were that when we moved to Zoom phones, we did not need every administrator to have a business phone, myself included, as well as my personal phone. I just have my business number is on my personal cell phone. So we were able to recycle those. So we got $420, actually got the check back the other day for that.
Thank you so much, I'm very excited to hear all that. I know I ask you every time, so that makes me, I love, you'll have to thank the tech department for their show and tell, I loved it. And I love the kids got to help do that, that's adorable.
They, that's their favorite reward, is to go hang out in the IT office. And he was, he, there was a little guy that yesterday that was giving, I had quite a lesson, took me an hour and a half to sit, and he had to show me all the different pieces he was taking out.
That's awesome.
And how hard it is to take the magnet out. But it's pretty amazing.
That was kind of the question I have, is that do the kids have an opportunity to help break them down and rebuild them? Is that an extra, I only ask specifically because I know my son would love to do something like that. He does it, you know, trying to build computers in his spare time, and I think there's a lot of kids out there. I mean, look, if we can get the kids to do the labor and break them all down, we're this close to being an apple, so.
I don't know if I'll go that far, but at the elementary school, they definitely do that, and part of the reason it works so well there is the staffing that's there, but also because of the way their schedule works, they have a little bit more flexibility as far as the time out of classrooms. And the same is true at the middle school. There's often, you'll often see Mr. Cannon with, with some students in there. The high school's a little bit more difficult. We do have a new IT specialist at the high school who is a former student, which is relatively...
Who?
His name's Joey Pharoah. You might have seen him here, because he also works with WCTV, and his mom's a paraprofessional at the elementary school. That's pretty exciting. But he and I have talked about trying to figure out a way to make that work. We've also talked about if a student, and I've, and I've had the discussion with Mr. Palladino and the APs, if a student broke their screen, so it's $32 to replace the screen, we charge them what we would have to pay for it, and to give them the option to maybe stay after school and replace five of them. Logistically, we haven't been able to make that work, he just started in mid-August, but I, I do think that's going to happen.
Excellent.
Thank you. Jeff?
So first of all, you have my admiration on multiple, for multiple reasons for, for what you're doing. I applaud. Do you have any idea how many tech departments are doing what you're doing?
Yes, and can I give you a number? No.
No, a percentage?
Student help desks, well, two different sides. IT specialists in the building doing repairs is not unusual. We actually met with the, some people from Old Rochester, week before last, to have a conversation about Zoom phones, but we started talking about, now they have one person in district that pretty much, that's all he does, is fix Chromebooks. We don't, we don't do it that way, but it's a different district. I'd say it's lit, repairs are done, if I had to guess, maybe sixty percent of districts... where their people are involved with the tech directors. Because we've had that conversation. There's also a lot of companies that, you know, save the staffing charges and pay for a company to do the repairs. It's another option.
If I was that ORR guy and all I did was repair Chromebooks, I'd be looking for a job.
It wouldn't be my favorite either, but as far as students working in the class and doing repairs, now having a student repair desk or a student tech desk is fairly common nationwide. It's, but it's a schedule, with the way our, the schedule rotates at the high school, and I'm not saying it shouldn't, I'm just saying it makes it more difficult to do that. Because it would almost have to be a class and.
Like an elective?
Right, and then you need a teacher. As opposed to, now, I will say this. So everyone in my department has a tie to wearham, except me. To be honest, right? All of my IT specialists went to school here, which I think is just pretty cool. And then Phil's wife is a wearham grad. All of the gentlemen that worked for me all worked with someone who you might know who it was in the high school with a person. And I can't remember, maybe Mr. Blackington? Not the Mr. Blackington at the middle school, but there was a Mr. Blackington at the high school. Would he have done?
Obsoled, yeah.
IT repair?
Would that be something, like if there's a tech club, like as an extracurricular as opposed to in-school? Like, I don't know if they, I mean, I know we have such an abundance of extracurricular at clubs at the high school. I just didn't know if any of them are more geared towards computers or tech, the tech side of things? If that would be, like as opposed to a classroom teaching? But as a, or as a volunteer opportunity for key club kids? Or, or things that are on our society?
I, I think, well, Joey's not only the IT specialist, but he's also the AV club advisor and the DOMA club advisor now. So I think having someone in the school with those kinds of backgrounds is going to be a great benefit. And I think that he will grow into that. But I just think, I think it's time, and after school's hard because of.
Yep.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you so much.
Do I have a motion to accept the obsolete equipment as obsolete? The demon obsolete?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so that's all the obsolete that was on your list, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have policy review subcommittee requiring to vote on some policies.
Yeah, so we had our first policy review committee meeting last week. And so the first in the packet is highlighted and lined out any of the changes that were made to the policies. The first one being the AP IB testing fees. We did work to, at least on the type, we're keeping because of the two-year, kind of the phase out of the IB. So they did vote to, they did not vote to remove IB from the policy because it was, that way it'll still cover. But they did strike and change the last sentence. So anything more than three exams, there will be no additional fee for the, for the AP IB testing. And other than, so just a motion to accept that as amended.
So moved.
Questions? So that's different than the before, before they had to apply for the funds to offset the costs? So now they just won't be charged?
So according to Scott, who was a guest at the meeting, because he's not one of the principals that is on it now, the way that the district has, I think, worked, I think, the pricing of it is that for what the test is, they're, our students are already paying because we are a free, reduced qualified district. They're not paying the full exam, they're, it's already a lower cost. But anything more than three, they weren't paying anything additional.
Scott, he wasn't charging anyone after three anyways.
Oh, okay.
So he just wanted the.
And before that, they were already discounted, so.
So we have a motion to accept, we have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you, so the second one was athletic ticket prices. Whereas we are no longer a host district for hockey. We just struck ice hockey from this policy and added volleyball because that is now a sport that we are taking a gate for. Other than that, football, basketball, and volleyball are the only ones where we do. So that was just the only change, was to replace ice hockey with volleyball. Other than that, this policy stayed the same.
So this is really less about ticket prices and more about supervision?
Correct.
Yeah.
About, about the eligibility of when you can come without.
Right.
An adult, yes.
Jeff, question? Comment?
It, it makes sense to me to charge adults who come to watch, even if they're coming to watch their, their children. I'm just wondering about what kind of message we're sending if a student of the high school has to pay to come watch their own volleyball team? Is that what this is saying?
No, it's for spectators, not for the team itself.
I'm not talking about the team itself. I'm talking about a student supporter of the team.
Well, the student price is already lower than the adult price. It's like, it's like a dollar to like, than $3. So it's like a dollar for a student, $3 for another, something to that effect. The reason that we did, we did talk about this a little bit in the review because we do not, we no longer have athletic fees. So eliminating or lessening what we get at gate fees takes away the funding that we have for the athletics department, so.
I get it.
And there's only three sports that we charge for.
And it's already reduced?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I will say, I went to a football game out of town a few weeks ago, and I paid $8 to get in, and it's $5.
No, you should.
It was just a choice.
And I was happy to do that, but the ticket prices in wearham are less maybe than some other towns.
I'm good, thanks. Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you, so the next policy is the early graduation policy. And this was more just updating and just clarifying language. We did have some, we actually have a very engaged policy review group this year, which I'm very excited about. And a lot of the questions came from elementary parents who were new to the policies and just had some really good, you know, ideas about making things just as clear as possible as a newer parent to the district. So I do appreciate their input. But for the early graduation, it was just striking the word release and replacing it with one full year early, just for clarification. And then updating the Massachusetts Core was, 2014 had been at that time. The last time this policy was viewed was the last time that that had been updated. But the Mass Core graduation requirements was last updated in 2018. So it was just making that change to reflect. Also, at Scott's urging to change the dates towards the end, from February 1 to December 1, to align with the policy, the, the way that the high school does the, I believe, the scheduling. And then that at the end of that second semester, that the student would be coded as grade 12 just because it wasn't as clear as it could have been. So that statement was added.
Any questions of this policy?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you, and then on the graduation requirements policy, that one was, the only changes were basically to make it align with the course of studies and adding an S to transfers for credit. So it was more or less making everything, the changes to this were making it in line with the, the high school's course of study.
I just have a question, so even though 8th grade is in the high school, it's not part of the requirements for graduation?
Unless they're taking a freshman weighted class. So the 8th grade core classes do not qualify, but if they were like an 8th grader taking like, you know, a freshman weighted class, like what would have been like a dual enrollment? That would be the only ones that would qualify for that.
You have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you.
Second policy was the motor vehicle idling on school grounds, and there were no changes made to this policy.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstained, five zero zero.
Okay, the last policy was the retention policy. And again, this was just adding clarification. So we moved, the paragraph that is now at the top had previously been under where it said elementary, so it really wasn't clear to new parents basically what the policy was. And we did strike the second to last sentence in that paragraph. We also added guardian to anywhere where it said parent, so it now said parent slash guardian. There were some grammatical things added there and adding administrator to identifying students having academic concerns in the elementary paragraph of that and reviewing all of the information. So it was more or less, each principal had the input that was relative to their school. And then the other thing, we adjusted the date, the age, the grades at the middle and the high school to reflect the current population.
Jeff?
So I admit this is a strong area of concern for me. In the end, while all those people can have input, in the end, the decision is the.
The building principal.
The building principal. I recall asking, I think it was the last meeting, but I could be wrong, about retention and boost. And the answer I got was, yes, there are a fair number of kids who are retained, which we've all been told can have very deleterious effects on children depending on how old they are, et cetera. And some percentage go into boost. But I was particularly disturbed when, when Dr. Chandler said that we didn't have room for all the kids who should go into boost. Could you confirm, Matt, that that's, that was a correct understanding of what Dr. Chandler said to me? Or to us more accurately?
I'm not sure that's exactly what she said.
So what is the correct interpretation of what she said? In other words, we've got a kid who has not progressed far enough in a particular grade. Let's, let's assume it's elementary school student. And this is the result of maybe MCAS, NOEA, whatever, okay? They're not ready for the next grade. I would expect that the principal would either recommend retention, which can be, as we've talked about, a problem, or give the alternative, boost. What I didn't want to hear, and maybe I didn't hear correctly, is that, that boost alternative is not available for every kid who is not appropriate to retain. So some percentage of kids are getting to the next grade inappropriately. Did I hear that incorrectly?
I, I didn't hear that, I heard.
All right, then what is the truth?
I, I don't know what the truth is, but what was your, what was your question?
My, my question or concern is, I don't want, of all the things we should be spending money on, it should be to make sure that kids in elementary school, especially in early elementary school, are getting to the next grade with maximum chance for success. And therefore, they should either be retained, if it's not deleterious, or they should be given the boost program to give them a leg up on trying to be successful because through the normal grade, they're not likely to be successful unless we give them some help. So that's, so my question is, can you guarantee me that we're doing that?
I, so my conversations with Bethany have, I can't speak for her, but I can say that I've talked to her about it. And she, she has said whenever she goes, whenever they feel that it is important to retain a student, they meet with the parents and they have that conversation.
But obviously, we don't retain every child that, that is on the MCAS or NOEA who is not meeting standards.
Right, we can't do that.
We can't do that, for reasons that we don't need to go into.
Right.
So what happens to the students we can't retain? Who are not meeting.
Well, it, I mean, all manner of things happen. But yeah, I mean, many of them go to summer school.
Okay, I'm concerned about the ones who don't, and yet we know they're not ready for the next.
So I don't know, I don't know what, what that number is, if that is a number. So I mean, that would, we would have to have Bethany here to really dive into that, exactly, the process and if there are any students that should be in summer school that there's not space for. I'm not aware that that happens, but I, I think we need to, we would need to have a, I would need to talk to Bethany about that.
So if you could report back on that subject? Because to me, there's only two choices, retention, which is a big, big deal, maybe not for kindergartners, but it's a pretty big deal, or boost. And if there's a third alternative, I want to know why it's educationally sound, that third alternative.
Like a social promotion?
Whatever it is.
My point of view, a third alternative should be ongoing interventions throughout the year to make that number of students not being.
During the year.
During the year.
Yes.
Hundred percent, that's, I think, the only, in my mind, the only real practical way. But I don't know, I don't have the magic wand for that, but.
Which means that if we still have kids who can't go to the next grade, even though they've gotten all those interventions, then what happened?
That, that question still exists.
Now, I happen to know, from talking to teachers, that I know, in fact, I'm almost certain what Bethany would say is, RTI didn't work because we have so many of those kids and we lack the resources to have all the interventions that we would like to give these kids. Which is why, if we don't have all those resources and we can't do it, all those interventions, which I agree 100% would be an ideal situation, okay? Then at least we have to offer them boost. At least we have to offer them boost. So I don't want to take up any more time, but I would love to have Bethany back to talk about that very subject because I don't know how, I thought Tracy did a remarkable job on the MCAS, you know, and yet she's got one arm tied behind her back if she's constantly getting kids who are not prepared for 5th grade. So could we have someone come back and talk about that specific issue?
We can, we can, but I mean, you're saying an awful lot that, I mean, we, we could be here all night, I mean.
Not tonight.
Kids coming into 5th grade that aren't ready, there are kids coming into kindergarten who are not ready. It's, it's not just Tracy that, that is in a pickle, Bethany's in a pickle.
Fair enough. But I, if kids come into kindergarten, especially if they haven't had preschool, but if kids come into kindergarten and we know they range from kids who are reading to kids who can't hold a book in the proper orientation, okay? I get that. But that's exactly the situation and requires boost.
Yeah, but I think you're, you're acting as if boost is the, the end-all. I mean, boost is, the summer program, it's.
I'm not the educator. What are the third alternatives besides?
Well, exactly what, I mean, the best way to do it.
Except if we can't afford those interventions, then I need a third.
Well, then we need to find the money to provide them.
I think part of it is the community and parent and like help as well.
And we need to do a job, our job of trying to.
Right, but Kevin's right, I mean, during the school day, when we have the kids, is the time, is the best time to do it.
Yes, but RTI failed because we lacked the resources.
Doesn't, right, but it doesn't always fail, but you're right. I mean, we, you need the resources to do it.
You can't have 60, 70, 80% of your kids needing resources because we can't afford them, okay? Or we have to reallocate the monies so that we're. so that we're pouring them into where kids are most in need so that by the time they get to middle school and the high school, they haven't, they're not frustrated, et cetera. I could go on and on. But this is a really, to me, it's the most important subject in my mind, period, as it relates to the education in Wareham Public Schools. The most important subject. I do not want kids moved, moved, moved when they can't if we can do something about it.
I, I think it goes to what Tracy said at our last meeting with her upside-down pyramid.
Yes.
And they are working. We, I think, the elementary school has recognized where everything has trickled up. And it's, we're still seeing some of those holdout, holdovers, right, from before those interventions were able to be in place at the elementary school. So, we haven't been able to fully follow that whole cohort all the way through. So, I think it's kind of unfair that some of those numbers are still, you still have the post-COVID effect of that particular age group, right? And then, they're going to trickle up to the high school. So, it's, it is sort of like kicking the can up the road to a point. But where the interventions that were recognized that they're starting earlier, like Matt said, with the interventions at the elementary school, we're not going to see that pyramid start to like, shift until we have, we have like, a few more years, I think, to follow that group to see if the changes they made are working. Because we're not going to see them right now.
But the truth is, even before COVID, we had this problem.
Right. But I think the interventions are more there now. Like, we didn't have ABAs a lot in the schools for a lot of years.